Good evening, everybody. This is the Carver Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for September 28, 2021. We are in Meeting Room 1 at Carver Town Hall. We're starting a little bit later because, as you probably observed, the Select Board was using this room and ran a little bit late. So we now are in position to begin. Thank you for your patience. We have a couple of administrative matters to go through first. And the first of these is approval of the meeting minutes from our last meeting of September 16, 2021. As is my custom, I have distributed those minutes without comment to all of the board members who were present and are eligible to vote on their accuracy or whether any changes, amendments, or modifications might be needed. So I ask the board members who were present for that meeting if they received a draft copy of those minutes.
I did.
Yes, each of you had an ample opportunity to review them.
Yes.
All right. Does anyone have any changes, amendments, or modifications that they'd like to make? Hearing none, I ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Mr. Poirier first, Ms. Clark second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So those meeting minutes are approved. Thank you for that. We're through with first of the administrative matters that I need to take care of this Before we go any further, I do want to draw everyone's attention to the fact that there is a sign-in sheet. And this is because the Board of Health has issued a notice to everyone indicating or requiring, actually, that all boards and committees have such a sign-in sheet for all the participants at the meeting. This compiled list will be used for contact tracing purposes in the event that there's a COVID-19 outbreak, just for contact tracing purposes. In addition, and as a strong reminder, and I'm quoting now from the Board of Health, "Any individual that is waiting for a COVID-19 test result must quarantine until a negative result is obtained. This includes individuals that are even symptom-free." These measures are, again, implemented by the Board of Health for the health and safety of all. So I ask for everyone's cooperation so that that sign-in sheet can be executed in the fashion that our local Board of Health wants. Now, while everybody is signing in that needs to sign in this evening, I would like to introduce the members of the Board again because our composition has changed since we last came together as a board in August. So to my far left is Mr. Casey. Mr. Casey, a lot of you may recognize, is a former Select Board Chair and has lived in the town for many years and is intimately familiar with the neighborhoods in this town. He is going to be an excellent addition to this Board, and we're grateful and fortunate to have his expertise brought to bear on these kinds of cases. To my immediate left is Mark Poirier, who for many years was an educator and also the Chair of the Science Department at his high school. So he has good knowledge of a lot of environmental issues that this Board sometimes comes into contact with. We are, again, fortunate to have him here with us. To my immediate right is Sharon Clark, who is the Vice Chair of this Board. She is the most senior member, and she is a title searcher and a real estate aficionado. She is wonderful at what she does, and, again, we are extremely fortunate to have someone with her breadth and depth of experience serving on this Board. To her right is Frances Mello, who is a business administrator, which is code for she runs that business that she works for and has for many years. So she brings good business acumen and good common sense to all of the cases that we have, and she has been with us for many years and has been an excellent addition to this Board. And to her right, over on the end, certainly last but not least, is James Barrington, who is our alternate, just sworn in. He too was an educator for many years, 36, right? 36 years, educator and coach. He has lived in the town since 1984. So he, like Frank Casey to my far left, has a very good knowledge of both the people and the neighborhoods in the town of Carver. And we are grateful to have him participating because, as most of you know, we're not being paid the big bucks to serve on this Board. So that's a little bit about us. I sit in the middle because I'm the Chair, but we have sort of an open policy in terms of allowing anybody and everybody on this Board who wants to participate to participate. We don't make distinctions between permanent Board members and alternates. We listen to everybody, and we also listen to you. It's my policy to open discussion to the public when we've had an opportunity and the petitioners on cases have had an opportunity to present their matters. So I'm an attorney in town and have been here in town for quite a number of years, and I feel that this Board, we're lucky to have this town of Carver, is really lucky to have this Board. These are really knowledgeable, deeply experienced people, professional people. Now, one other administrative matter. We have another case in the pipeline, so I want to discuss a date now on that other case. And if either of the two cases that are on our agenda tonight need to be rescheduled because we don't have enough time or we require more data, then we want to announce that day now. Now, I've been in touch with the Planning Department to determine publication schedules because we have to publish, as many of you know, all new cases. So I'm going to suggest the date of October 26th. This will give the paper enough time to put this new case in the paper and comply with publication requirements. Is October 26th okay with you, Mr. Barrington?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Poirier?
Yes.
Mr. Casey? So October 26th it is for our next meeting. You folks might want to make a note of that in the event that we do need to go over on either of these two cases tonight, or if you have a particular interest in the next one. Okay. So can you pull that agenda up? Do I read it?
Want me to read it?
Yeah. So it's our custom to read the public hearing notice into the record, and because this was not included in our packets tonight, as we expected it would be, we've been able to pull it up on the phone, and Ms. Clark will do the honors on the first case.
Public hearing, case 70-1-2R. The petitioner, VS Mass Smart TPD-1 LLC, appealing the revocation of building permit number 2020-143 to install a 600-kilowatt ground-mounted solar system on property located at 72 Center Street, Carver, Mass. Assessors map 70 lot 1-2R pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 48, Sections 8 and 15, as well as Section 5223 of the Carver zoning bylaws on the ground that the petitioner has not increased the height and tilt angle of the solar panels in alleged violation of special permit decision of the Town of Carver Planning Board.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's a lot.
It's tiny.
Now, this case, ladies and gentlemen, has a lot of procedural history to it. So for the sake of saving time and also hopefully educating many of you that might be here tonight out of interest for this case and those at home who may be watching, please allow me a couple of minutes to go through that procedural history as we understand it. And as I said at our last meeting, all of us review what papers are submitted to the Planning Board file regarding our cases. We review those in advance. So we do not come to these cases cold. We don't have conversations with anybody on the outside, but we...
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but the people in the hallway can't hear what's going on.
Mm-hmm.
So you may want to find another venue so everyone can hear what's going on.
Well, I'm not sure there's another venue in the building.
Not in the building, but the school is an option.
Well, we'll take that up in a moment. Actually, why don't we take that up now? Before I get into that procedural history, perhaps Mr. Belvin's suggestion is good in this case, and that would be that if there is a problem hearing me, a problem following what's going to be occurring in this case and in the following case, we can move to a larger venue. But that's going to require another hearing date. So everybody who's here tonight is going to have to say, okay, well, nope, not tonight. We're going to have to come back another time. And the venue that has been suggested and one that we have used in the past is the auditorium at the high school. So I'm reluctant to ask anybody to come back again. You know, we have a lot of people geared up and ready to go tonight, but I want to kind of get a sense, particularly from the petitioner in the first case, and if you could go over to the table at this point. We have a great deal of public interest in this case, as well as in the next one. So I want to kind of get a feel from you as to what your thoughts might be about postponing so we can get to a larger venue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Rob D'Ambroso, D'Ambroso Law in Plymouth. You know, from our perspective, this is the second time now. I know it's through no one's fault that we've heard before you had folks fly in from across the continental divide for this hearing, so, you know, we'd have a strong preference to move forward. I would suggest that the vast majority of the folks here are not here for our project. I think a handful are. So I don't know if it makes sense to bifurcate a proceeding, but perhaps ours could move forward, and if the second matter, you know, if the folks interested in the second matter thought it in everyone's interest to continue to a later date, perhaps that would be an approach that I could suggest.
Okay. So for those who are present for the second case, which is the Pine Barrens case, is there somebody here for the petitioner that would like to speak? Yes, sir?
Hi, I'm Michael O'Neil.
Why don't you go over to the microphone and keep your voice up? It amplifies a little, but not a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Michael O'Neil. I'm the attorney for the petitioner. We would like to go forward this evening.
Well, we have a lot of people here, and we'll try to get as far as we can tonight in view of the fact that we started 20, 25 minutes late anyway.
Understood.
Okay?
Understood.
So I'll try to keep my voice up so that everybody can hear me, and we will go forward with dispatch. So with regard to that first case, this is the 72 Center Street case, and as I told everybody before, there's been a lot of procedural history. So I'm going to recapitulate that history as I and the other board members understand it, and I'm sure if I have anything wrong, I'll be corrected. So this matter involves a landowner in the town of Carver, which is, the legal name is Silva Family Nominee Trust, and Edward Silva is the trustee of this trust. And he entered into a lease arrangement with 978 Solar Development LLC for his property at 72 Center Street, or a portion of it. And on that property, he has a cranberry farm. And the lease arrangement was with a company called Borrego Solar Systems, Inc. And the agreement was for Borrego to install a 600-kilowatt DC solar system on a structural racking system, what we would refer to as a solar array, and I'm sure we've seen these throughout the town of Carver. They're located on a number of cranberry bogs throughout the town. Now, the building permit for that solar array was issued by the then-Building Commissioner on June 18, 2020, following the application of Borrego Systems and a site plan review and special permit decision that was made by the Planning Board on November 13, 2018. So the Planning Board went to a decision on this, and they allowed that solar project to begin based upon the plans which had been submitted to it in site plan review. Subsequently, control of this project was transferred by Borrego in March 2020 to a company called Valta Energy, which owns a limited liability company called VS Mass Smart TPD-1 LLC. That's a mouthful. And it is that company which is the petitioner in this case, which is before this Board Now, construction began on that solar array out on 72 Center Street, Mr. Silva's property, and it was well underway pursuant to the building permit, which was issued by the then-Building Commissioner following the site plan review by the Planning Board back in 2018. However, the former Building Commissioner then revoked this building permit under which the solar project had commenced based on alleged violations of the site plan special permit decision issued by the Planning Board. So they got going, and then complaints were made because the project was turning out different, it was thought, than what had been allowed by the Planning Board in its earlier decision in 2018. Specifically, the former Building Commissioner alleged in his letter of June 29, 2020 that the petitioner, now the subsequent company, Valta, not the original one, Borrego, had increased the height and tilt angle of the panels of the solar array, with the height going from eight feet, eight inches to 11 feet, five sixteenths of an inch, and the tilt angle from 25 degrees to 35 degrees, which, again, was alleged to be in violation of the special permit decision of the Planning Board and the site plans submitted to it by Borrego back in 2018. Thereafter, the plans that eventually went to the Building Commissioner, the then-Building Commissioner, before the project began, now it's owned by Valta, those plans changed, allegedly, with regard to the height and the tilt angle. Now, the then-Building Commissioner issued a stop work order on October 21, 2020, and the petitioner's representative, and we're talking about Valta now, the subsequent company doing this project, appeared before the Planning Board on April 27, 2021, and requested what they characterized as a minor modification that would allow the project to move forward without the necessity of disassembly and reconstruction, which was alleged to involve considerable expense to Valta. Specifically, the petitioner offered to decrease the maximum panel height to 10 feet, one inch, and the tilt angle to 25 degrees. This proposal, presented as a so-called minor modification to the original plan, which had been filed in 2018, was rejected by the Planning Board, despite the fact that the then-Building Commissioner and the current planning director had recommended that it do so by letter dated April 27, 2021. Thereafter, the former Building Commissioner revoked the building permit issued on June 18, 2020 by his letter dated June 29, 2021. This project now is halted because there is no building permit, and the issue comes down to whether the height and tilt angle has been changed to such a substantial degree that the building permit should have been revoked, as it was, or whether it really is little more than a minor modification under the circumstances, and the petitioner is therefore asking this Board to step in and reverse the decision of the Building Commissioner to revoke that permit and to allow, therefore, the project to go forward. I hope that's all clear. That's a lot of info, but there's been a lot of history here. This is three years of history. So, counsel, have I recited accurately the history in this case?
I think you may have misspoken, Mr. Chairman, just in one minor respect. The building permit was issued to the current project developer of Valta Energy, not to the predecessor, Borrego. I'm not sure that that's material, but I just want to correct that for the record.
Okay. And that is the VS Mass Smart TPD-1 LLC?
Yes, I know the name's catchy and...
All right. And they are owned and/or controlled by Valta Energy. Is that true?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So now that that technical correction has been made by counsel, I am prepared to hear, and the Board is prepared to hear from you. As you can tell, we have prepared. We've read reams of material, and if you could be as concise and brief as possible, we would all be grateful.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Before testimony starts...
Bring that mic a little closer, would you?
Before testimony starts, I'd like to recuse myself.
Yes, you have a conflict. Is that true, Ms. Mello?
Yes.
So you're going to step away from the table, and our new alternate is going to be sitting as a voting member on this case. So we will have a full complement of five. You may proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the Board. I appreciate everyone's time, and Chairman Gray did a nice job of summarizing the facts, so I won't belabor them. You know, I think what we have here, at least in the view of the petitioner, is a project that was properly permitted and constructed and which observed every step in the permitting process. Really wouldn't be anything in hindsight that I think we could have done differently from a process standpoint to have arrived at a different outcome, and that's the case that I'm going to succinctly present. I've got Thomas. Would you advance the slide, please, for me?
Bring that mic close, would you? We have people lined up in the hallway.
Yeah, I don't want to hunch over. Oh, that's a little better, huh?
Yep.
Okay. So I'm not sure how to do this. So anyway...
You can sit if you want.
Yeah, there you go.
All right. So with me tonight, I've got Thomas Strong of Valta Energy. He flew in this morning from the West Coast. I've also got Greg from, who's the project engineer, and then, of course, you got myself, Thomas, if you'd advance the slide for me. So again, this is all a background that Mr. Gray has set forth, so I won't dwell upon it. But again, you know, just in a nutshell, you know, Borrego started the permitting process in 2018. The Planning Board issued a decision and a special permit. Valta took control of the project. Valta applied for and received a building permit in June of 2020. So, you know, part of the issue here, from a practical standpoint, is you can't adjust the height of panels after they're constructed without great expense. And the permit was revoked when the project was weeks away from being plugged in, so to speak. I'm not a technical expert, but, you know, it was substantially complete and constructed on the ground at a seven-figure expense to the applicant. Additionally, the building inspector inspected the system. It passed inspection, and we've got that evidence to show you, which, of course, you've seen in your packets. Go ahead, Thomas. We talked about the minor modification, which, point of information, that was really done sort of at the urging of certain folks in town, various town bodies. Certainly not our preference, but in the spirit of getting the project done in some way, shape, or form, the petitioner was willing at the time to reduce the angle to 25 degrees and, you know, therefore fall within what we would have considered to be a minor modification. I would like to take exception to the way that the issue was couched by you at the get-go. You said the issue here is whether the height and tilt angle have changed to such a degree as to merit revocation, or is it a minor modification? I think that's more or less what you said. I don't think the issue's framed correctly in our view. We don't view this as a modification of any kind. We constructed a project really within centimeters, millimeters, inches of the plan set that was approved by the Building Department. So we didn't modify anything. We submitted plans that were for general reference with an estimated height, and that's what the Planning Board approved. You want to go ahead, Thomas? You can go one more. I don't know if anyone can see this or how well you can see it, but I tried to highlight in yellow the pertinent language. This is the plan set that the Planning Board approved. You can see, I can barely see it from where I'm sitting, maybe someone with great eyesight could see it. I'm going to read it from my slide deck here. This detail sheet in the plan set that the Planning Board approved says, "The information shown here is for general reference only." And then to the left of that slide, the other highlighted reference is "Approximate height of eight feet, eight inches." So again, that's what the Planning Board approved, to be correct. You can go ahead, Thomas. This is the plan, a close-up of an excerpt of one of the plan sheets that was submitted to the Building Department, I'm sorry, to the Building Department, and that the Building Department approved. As you can see, it's got a 35-degree tilt, and it's got the 11-foot, five sixteenths-inch height, which is what we built on the ground. Go ahead, Thomas. As you can see here, this is the June 18th building permit. We were issued a permit to construct a ground-mounted solar system that conformed to the terms of the application on file with the Building Department. Well, that's what we built. And this is the signed-off building permit. We had the building inspector out there, again, at the end of the construction or near the end of the construction, and the construction, the build, was approved. Go ahead, one more. And so I guess that's it. You know, in a nutshell, I guess, again, our view, just to reiterate, is we don't view this being a modification or a departure from what was approved. We built what was approved. We submitted plans to the Building Department, our predecessor did. The Planning Department took it to a vote at a public hearing. They approved plans with approximate specifications for height and tilt. We submitted final plans that modified that slightly or departed from that slightly, I should say. Those were approved by the Building Department. That's what was built on the ground. The bylaw, the zoning bylaw, says, "All large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic arrays shall undergo site plan review prior to construction and prior to the issuance of a building permit to ensure conformity with all applicable bylaws." The Planning Board approved it. We comply with all the bylaws. There is no bylaw that restricts height. In fact, the structural height limitation in the town's 35 feet, we're nowhere near that. And, you know, moreover, I think it's worth bearing in mind that the zoning bylaw, the purpose of it, is to promote the creation of large-scale ground-mounted solar. As we also know, the Commonwealth has a presumption in favor of solar. Solar can't be unreasonably restricted or regulated. Again, in our view, certainly revoking a duly-issued building permit... Again, in our view, certainly revoking a duly-issued building permit that was issued pursuant to duly-approved plans submitted to a planning board and an issued special permit is an unreasonable regulation of solar. So in our view, we respectfully ask this board to consider overturning the revocation of the building permit, and we're happy to field any questions.
Thank you, counsel. Before we open up for questions to you and others, I'd like to inquire whether Mr. Silva is present in the hearing room. Mr. Silva, could you come up and sit at the table that counsel is now vacating? Mr. Silva is the landowner on which this solar array was constructed. Mr. Silva, I imagine that you have some things that you want to tell us. Is that true? Bring that nice and close.
You'd sit here for about two or three hours because how you characterize...
I can barely hear you. Bring that right up to your mouth.
I said you would be here for about two or three hours by the time I get done characterizing.
Okay, so why don't we do this? Why don't you try to be as succinct as you can?
You know, I wish I could, but just like you said, this project's been going on for three years. How he characterizes it is totally incorrect. I don't want to waste my time, nor theirs, nor yours. This is not as simple as they're presenting it.
Okay, give us the high points. Why is it not the same?
First of all, when you gave the height, which I think was given by the town planner at 11 and 5/16ths, it's 11 feet 7 inches. You can all come out there and get on the ladder and see it. I specifically hired Borrego Solar. I understand they sold it, the lease to them. But I had a thought, first of all, before I go on any further, did everybody get my narrative here?
Yes, we are in possession of your paperwork.
Did you just pass it out tonight, or did they get it before?
No, it was distributed earlier.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, lost my train of thought.
You started with Borrego.
Yeah, I started with Borrego, and this process, as you said, has been going on for three years. I was originally doing this project myself, not leasing it. So I know quite a bit about solar projects. I know exactly what I want in my property. You've got a number of solar projects here in Kava that are on abandoned mugs that are in the woods. Mine is on all three sides, three sides of that solar panel, is an operating cranberry farm.
Keep your voice up.
I specifically intended to have this put in in a certain way, which was brought before the planning board. When he says the planning board approved what they built, no, they didn't. They didn't go before the planning board with their plans. They did not. And the building inspector, when he seen those plans, he thought it was Borrego. He had no idea it was Valta. Those plans were approved, and they didn't go before that board. And just like I put in that narrative I gave you, which is very simple for anybody to understand, everybody is thinking about putting solar on their roofs or their homes, at least a lot of people are. This project is no different than leasing for your house. So if I hired a company to lease, they're going to lease my property for my roof. I hire them, it gets approved, they go before the planning board permitting process, gets approved, right? And then they put up solar panels on my house that are much higher than what I was approved by the previous...
Company.
Company, yeah. You can't do that. If you allow that to happen, when they say minor modification, they're talking about the amount of money they're going to spend. I hate to see them spend that kind of money, but listen, I came before this town, before the building inspector. When they started this project, I told their contractor about the height of it. That could have alleviated the whole problem. One of their biggest issues is, is they built this thing much higher than they needed to do it. They built it above the height of the dikes, and I understand why they did it. But if they didn't do that, they needed to talk to me because I farmed that property. I farmed all three sides of it. They didn't speak to me about anything. They just came in here, grabbed the permit from Borrego, and decided to build their project, built it the way they want. And then when I seen it going up to 11 feet 7 inches, which is much higher than I want it to be, which sticks out to the edge of the road, I got equipment that goes right close to it. I'm not here to make, as I said, waste anyone's time, but this is a travesty. You know, it's, they may be, it may be, you know, when he says, "I disagreed with tilting the panels," nobody here is stupid. Listen, these panels are sitting like this. If you tilt the panels this way, tilt it down to change their height, it's going to go further out into the road. And they explain, he explains these things, this is some simple matter.
You're referring to the bog road, correct?
That's right. That's right. And then they want to put a fence. Listen, when I put this project in with Borrego, I explicitly told them, "I don't even want to do it if you can't put the amount of kilowatts that I can put in here." Well, we can get it up to this amount, 600, which is there, but we won't be able to get a fence on it. Well, if you can't do it, then you can't do it. Well, I'm going to go before the planning board, see if I can get it approved without a fence, so we can squeeze that 600 kilowatts in there. Well, they did, and they got it approved. So it gets sold, and now I got a company that comes in and puts panels out way out to the edge of the road, and now they want to put a fence also. I mean, you know, this is the same analogy I told you about the house. It's no different. Where does the, I'm the landowner. I'm the landowner. All they had to do, when they started this project, all they had to do was come up to me and ask me what, but they didn't need to know that because according to Borrego, Borrego told me they, their due diligence when they were doing this project, they found out about everything that was approved by this planning board, I mean, by the planning board that went before. So they knew what was required. And furthermore, you got in your folder, because they didn't, the previous site manager, who I was working with on Borrego, was really upset about what they were doing. So what did they do? They had their lawyers send a cease and desist from their attorneys for me not to speak at all to the previous company or myself because they didn't want us, they didn't want them coming down to the project to tell them, you know, you guys aren't doing it the way it was supposed to be done. I had a lot of requirements in this, and if this is going to be ignored because they're going to spend, it's going to cost them a lot of money? This is, when you go forward with this to any other project, I'm going to stop. You go forward with any project and approve them for this? I mean, you know, you're going to get this to happen to you many times over.
Mr. Silva, I heard you say on a couple of occasions that you didn't want to waste our time, and I want to tell you, you're not wasting our time.
Okay.
Okay, you're not.
All right. Listen, I feel, I feel pretty, I'm pretty passionate about this, you know, and...
All of us were interested in hearing what you had to say.
Yeah.
And interested in reading what you wrote in your folders.
Okay.
And we have been in possession of those folders now for a little bit, and so we've read through everything and understand your concerns.
Yeah.
I want to ask you now, aside from the fact that you feel affronted by what's happened here...
I wouldn't say affronted is the right word.
Okay, well, I'm trying to be...
You can pick a more harsher word than that.
This is a family hearing.
Yeah.
But apart from that, apart from feeling taken advantage of, if you will, because the height and the tilt angles changed on your property once the solar array began to be constructed by...
They didn't go before the planning board.
I get that, and we covered that. What I want to ask you is this, aside from the process and the procedure, what is it that would satisfy you?
I don't think that's, it's obvious what will satisfy me. It wasn't built correctly the way it was supposed to be.
No, it's not obvious, to me, anyway, and I see other people shaking their heads. What is it that you want?
Put it the way it was supposed to be built.
So you want the height reduced to 8 feet 8 inches and the tilt angle down to 25 degrees?
That's right.
Now, they've...
No, no, when you say the tilt angle down to 25 degrees, I mean, if they, if they put it to the proper height, as you, as you lower it, it's going to decrease its distance as you're lowering...
Now, what would you say to counsel, who's just presented the position of his client articulately? What would you say to him when he's going to get up here and he's going to tell us, "Well, out of good faith, we've already reduced the height down to 10 feet 1 inch..."
They haven't done that.
"...which is 15 inches more than what the planning board originally permitted..."
Yeah.
"...and they're prepared to reduce the height angle as well." What would you say to that?
You cannot discuss, the discussion you're having now about that, about inches and feet, and if you reduce it, you need to come out to the site so we can discuss that there. And then you get a better idea because what I have, what I tell you, it's probably not going to register as to what the issue is.
Well, we're not inexperienced folks.
Yeah, but I...
So what you say is registering, I assure you of that. So again, I ask you this question because we're trying to get to some sort of resolution here.
You are.
What would satisfy you? Are you going to stand by the planning board decision that was issued to, when Borrego appeared before it? Or are you prepared perhaps to compromise a little with the new project developer?
You need to, this board needs to come down to my site.
You're not answering my question.
Yeah, I am. Yeah, I am. I'll answer that question when you come down to my site.
Well, we're all here tonight, and I'm not ruling out the possibility of doing a site walk.
Well, that's what I'm asking you to do.
As long as you have coffee and donuts, because we do it on Saturday mornings.
I'll have whatever you want to drink, whatever you want to eat.
Okay.
You know?
If it's later on in the afternoon, maybe some whiskey, huh?
Well, there you go.
But yeah, we're not ruling that out, coming out here and taking a look. But I know, hold on just a second.
Yeah.
And then I'm going to open this up to other board members, and then back to counsel. I read carefully all of your submissions.
Thank you.
Including your letter to Valta dated August 25.
Yeah.
And you had a number of items that you felt you needed to have addressed. A lot of them, for want of a better word, were landscaping-type items.
No, not true.
Which...
You're characterizing that letter as landscaping items. It's not.
We're talking about seeding bog banks...
Well, you're picking a specific sentence out of that whole narrative.
Let me just finish for a minute.
All right, go ahead.
Let me, let me finish. This is not an attack on you, I'm just trying to get to where your head is at on this. As of August 25, 2020, this is a letter signed by you, directed to Valta, and you had a number of items having to do with sloped road banks, seeding bog banks, installing soil, restoring roads to pre-existing grade and level, installing silt fencing, hiring a more experienced operator for the excavator for when the final trenching is completed.
That's right.
And there's more. There are a couple of telephone pole issues as well that you discussed in this letter.
Well, there was nobody overseeing the job, which was pretty astounding to me. I couldn't get the inspector to come down there, conservation didn't come down there, so I was policing the job. So I had to send that letter out for all those issues. You know, this may be embarrassing to the town, but it's a fact, it's what happened.
It's not embarrassing to this board. We're used to having to deal with controversial subjects. We have broad shoulders. But we're here to hear you, Mr. Silva. You are not, again, you're not wasting our time, but I do need to get a better understanding of what it is that you're looking for to see if there's any hope to bridge differences here and come to an agreement that would be acceptable to you and Valta.
Well, you know what? I am in an agreement with Valta. We need to come down to the, have a meeting down to the farm, and not here.
Okay. I understand that. And I think what I'm hearing you say is that you're interested in having that discussion with the Valta folks.
I don't know which way that discussion will go, but I don't want to have that here.
I understand that. I'm just trying to get a sense as to whether you're open to that kind of communication. Are you? I think that's what I'm hearing you say, not here, but maybe out of your property.
Yeah, because the question you're posing to me, I'd rather have, I'd rather that be in an environment, because even though this is an open hearing, certain things are personal, and I'd rather discuss some of those things at the farm.
Mr. Silva, thank you. Counsel, can you assume the chair for a second? I think that you would agree that legally, Valta, through this other entity that's got the long name, has an obligation to install these solar panels in a manner which is in substantial compliance with the original site plan, which was reviewed and approved by the planning board. Mr. Silva's position is that what eventually was constructed out there, in large part, was not in substantial compliance with the original site plan. As I understand it from looking at your nice slides there, you feel that the site plans that were reviewed by the planning board were sufficiently detailed, although not precisely on height and tilt angle, but sufficiently detailed to give the planning board a good idea as to what it was voting on, correct?
Yes, approximately, yes.
Now, the planning board decision, of course, we have a copy of that, and this is the one that I referred to at the beginning, goes back to 2018. And that decision is conditioned on a number of items, as you know. And condition two says, and I'm quoting, "The project must be constructed as approved in the site plan. Any other revisions will require approval from the board as a modification of this decision," which you attempted to do, rightly so, and the board turned you down. So as I understand it, now that I've, we've all listened to Mr. Silva and have a better feel for where his head is at on this, as I understand it, your argument is that these plans that were originally submitted to the planning board were sufficiently detailed because they said things like, the information shown here is for general reference only, and that the drawings and the height of the panels was referred to as approximate. So I think I have a pretty good understanding as to where the issue is here. Is this something that was built in substantial compliance with the planning board decision based upon that language, which is a little, I wouldn't characterize it as soft, but a little bit indefinite because it's hard to come up with precise measurements every time, and I'm sure Ms. Clark will talk about that momentarily? Or is it not in substantial compliance because of the difference in height, as Mr. Silva has explained, and tilt angle? And so this really is a substantial modification, and the building commissioner was right in issuing the cease order and right in revoking the permit? That's, I think, the issue, as tightly framed as I can do it, based upon all this paper. So I'm going to be quiet for a few minutes, and I'm going to turn this meeting over to the rest of the members. Who wants to talk first?
Well, I'd like to know why the, what was the decision to change the height made? Who made that decision from the original plans?
I think Thomas could probably speak to that. I mean, at a high level, I guess my remark on that would be that it's commonplace in solar developers' practice to submit final construction plans that are not identical to planning board-approved site plans. And I think you might find that to be the case with many construction projects. Now, Thomas, I don't know if you want to add anything?
Would you like a comment on that?
Yeah, speak right up, though, because you're not amputating.
Do you want to open the mic?
Yes, please. Mr. Silva, I'll give you another opportunity, all right?
So as if, as anybody building any project, after they've obtained a project, they review the drawings, and we look at ways to increase the value of the project. One of the ways to increase the value due to the angle of the sun here in Massachusetts is the optimal angle for a solar panel is 35 degrees. That's what changed the tilt. Obviously, when you go from a 25-degree tilt, it's brother Silva's, Mr. Silva's... Obviously, when you go from a 25-degree tilt, as Mr. Silva's pointed out, to a 35-degree tilt, that elevation changes. So in short, we went in, we looked at how we can improve the value of the project. The best way to improve it was to change it from a 25 to 35. We then looked at the planning, the council, the city ordinances regarding the height elevations. In this case, it's, I believe, 35 feet. We were not in violation with that, so we made the changes to the corrections to the plan and submitted them to the building department for approval. We did not feel like we were in any violations due to the fact that the height of the, the building heights here on structures in the, in the town of Carver was at 35. And it may be 25. I apologize if I got that number wrong.
Was the owner notified at all of changes?
We had a lease with the owner. That was not something I was privy to. I apologize. I don't have more information on that. What communication was going back and forth between the owner? I did not get involved with the project until we received the building, the current building permits from the town of Carver.
Let me see if I can clear something up before Mr. Silva charges the table here. To my knowledge, your company never had a lease with Mr. Silva.
The holding company had a lease with Mr. Silva that we purchased from Borrego Solar.
Is that true, counsel? Because I didn't, I didn't catch that in the paperwork. What I understood was that Mr. Silva had a lease with Borrego, and that lease was then assigned by Borrego to your company, to your client.
That's correct.
And Mr. Silva was not a, not a signatory to that designation. Is that correct?
Correct, but I would note that assignment of the lease was permitted under the terms of the lease.
Mr. Barrington, same line of questions or a different line now?
I'm going to absorb and listen to some other questions, and then I may throw something else out. Thank you.
I have a little bit of difficulty. I have a little bit of difficulty understanding the line that you have highlighted up there saying it's for general use only. Does that mean you can show them, you know, a shed that's conforming to 600 square feet, but it's for general use only, and you build a 1,200-square-foot shed? Do you think that covers you?
I think.
What's the legal argument between that covering what I think is a more substantial modification?
I think that's a terrific question, Ms. Clark. And I guess my answer would be that it's the building department's job, and it's within their purview to review issued permits, review submitted plans, and make that determination. If you can't rely upon a duly-issued building permit, what's the use of it? I mean, that's really the building commissioner's discretion. Evidently, some feel that they're with, it's within their discretion to revoke the permit as well. But, you know, I guess my answer would be we rely on the building permit to make that judgment.
I mean, there's several little issues here that bother me. First off, I'm just going to ask a basic question. Do you know the legal definition to approximately?
I'm not sure that there is one, but if there is, let me know.
Well, there is. And it means very nearly approaching accuracy or correctness, nearly precise, perfect or complete.
That's within the zoning bylaw?
That's in legal definitions. Handbook.
Okay.
Not my first time looking those things up. But if your argument is that the difference in the, the difference between eight point, or eight feet and eight inches to.
Eleven and five.
Eleven and five is approximate, that doesn't fall within that definition. Eight feet, what is it? Eight feet?
Eight feet, eight inches.
Eight feet, eight and eleven.
Although Mr. Silva says that it's actually 11 feet, seven inches.
11 feet, seven. That, that just doesn't fall in the definition of what you're terming as an approximate minor modification. So that's one issue I have in, in terms of definition. The other thing that really concerns me, and we don't have a copy of the lease agreement, and I'm certain that Mr. Silva had his attorney review the lease agreement, and there's, there probably is a clause in there for assigning. But I do think that it's, I just think it's somewhat unprofessional to assign the entire lease to a completely different company that, according to his testimony, didn't have the, you know, wherewithal to knock on his door and discuss the, the case ahead of time. That just doesn't seem fair. And I realize it's probably allowed, but then let's talk about who's the landowner. Mr. Silva, you're going to be able to come back.
I'll call on you again.
Just make a note, but, and that, that has me bothered.
Yeah, I mean, I would note that Valta strongly disagrees with that characterization. I think that Valta takes the view that there was quite a few attempts, there was dialogue, and then quite a few attempts after things headed south, so to speak, to engage. And at one point, Mr. Silva kind of went dark, but again, just.
Do you have an email chain or phone calls or contemporary notes? Maybe I may, I called him, he did not speak to me. I called him, he told me to.
Sure, we could produce that. If that's at issue in this hearing, we could produce it, not on the fly, but we could.
I mean, communication is kind of a big, big thing with this.
Yeah, I mean.
Wait, someone's coming up.
Yeah, I mean, I think that our site, project manager probably be in the best position to address that.
Good evening, ma'am.
Bring that mic nice and close.
Sorry. Just real quickly, we did at one point, aside from all the communications that we can produce, we had an onsite visit with the current planning board, Jim Walsh, the commissioner, the city engineer. Everybody came out to Mr. Silva's property and did a site walk, as well as Mr. De Ambroio.
Mr. Silva.
At, at that point, Mr. De Ambroio tried everything possible to negotiate some type of settlement to this, this dispute. Mr. Silva told the planning board director, the building commissioner, as well as myself and Mr. De Ambroio, he had no interest in making any kind of, there was, there was, there was no negotiations whatsoever. There was nothing we could do to satisfy him.
All right.
We did try. We tried numerous times.
Well, we'll have an opportunity to question Mr. Silva, right? So you, Mr. De Ambroio, you indicated that you received some kind of outside pressure or Valta did in order to go to the planning board for the minor modification?
I think direction might be a better word than pressure.
Right, okay, that was the word you used. What was that, and where did it come from?
I believe that the dialogue with Jim Walsh, town planner, you know, we kind of were trying to brainstorm, you know, short of litigation and other unpalatable options, what might we be able to do to work this out, particularly in light of the fact that we were having trouble communicating with Mr. Silva? And Jim Walsh had suggested, look, you know, even though you may not agree that it's a minor modification, you, that might be one avenue. And I believe he may have been advised by town council along those lines as well. Town council, Amy Questle of KP Law, was present at that planning board hearing. You could certainly verify that with her, but I believe Jim, in discussion with Amy, had suggested that to us.
And you went forward with it?
We did. We thought that would be a, you know, kind of good compromise for a bad situation.
And it was denied?
That's correct.
And the premise that it was denied is that it was not considered minor?
I believe that's right.
I mean, I listened to the meeting, so, yeah. Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Correa. I'll step right down. Mr. Casey.
Quick, please.
The meeting to which you are just referring, you and your project manager, where everybody was out at the site, occurred three years ago.
There was a more recent meeting that I think Greg was referring to that occurred this past summer.
2020.
Right, there may have been one earlier.
No.
Yeah, the one that I attended was in, I think, July.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it was after the project was shut down in July of 2021.
Okay. Thank you all. Mr. Silva, I promised you that I'd hear from you one more time. So wait a minute, let counsel withdraw so you can get up to the microphone. Yes, please make it concise.
All right.
Bring that microphone close. Thank you.
Thomas brought up issues that had to do with the interests of Valta, had to do with none of my interests, none of the landowners' interests. So you come and you get, you get a lease given to you, and you, you think you're going to build the Empire State Building, and nobody's going to tell you anything. You can just do what you want, you know? So you're looking out for your interest, how much kilowatts, how much power you can, you know what? If I was on the other side of the coin, maybe I wouldn't do, take their approach, but they never called, they never told me anything they're going to do in regards to my farm, how I operate my farm, which is important. They could care less.
Okay. You've made all these points. And Mr. Silva, we have heard you.
All right.
Okay? We have heard you. I need to keep this moving.
Can I just ask Mr. Silva one question?
Yeah, Mr. Silva, one question?
Can I make a remark to them?
Wait, I asked first.
Mark, you have one.
Depending on what you ask.
Ms. Clark.
I'm waiting.
Of course. Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Conversation is up here.
All right.
Quick, before I forget the question. Can you still farm your bogs if these have been, I assume these have been constructed and they've been lying, lying there for a year?
Almost two.
Almost two? Can you still farm your bogs right now?
Yeah.
You can?
Yeah.
Okay.
But you need to come down to the farm.
You know, I really think, I've never gotten up close to too many of these, and I.
It's important that, I think the board should. It's my opinion, but I mean, you don't have to take my opinion, but.
And can you? Is, is the issue, if you can still farm your bogs, which I assume this is what the large ground-mounted solar arrays are for, so that bog owners can still farm their bogs, is the issue that you were unaware, or is it aesthetics? Or have they?
It's a whole.
Have they overstepped what they planned to do short of the height?
Absolutely, they overstepped. They didn't talk, they never even discussed anything.
Okay, if we can, if we can just back off of the communication thing just for a second. I know, I know that's a, and it's a sticking point with me as well.
Yeah.
I want to know how much from the original plans they exceeded outside of the height? Did they make it bigger? You say there's, did Valta do, do something that Borrego, other than the height? Valta do something that Borrego had not intended to be done?
Other than the height?
Is it bigger? Did they slant them differently?
Well, listen, the reason why I'm hesitating, because when you say other than the height, because of that height, there's other implications from that height. And that's the reason why I'm asking you to come down, because for me to explain it to you, you need to come down there and take a look. And I can tell you about my farming practices, my equipment, and what my plans are for the future and how they built that system. And the reason why I wanted it built the way I went before the planning board with Borrego.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Mr. Correa.
Oh, a quick question.
Speak up to me.
Yes, please. So how does the modification that they've suggested here affect your ability?
What modification?
The height, the height change that they're talking about. How does that impact your ability to use your equipment?
You need to come down.
I'd like to explain it to me, please.
No, I, I, I want you to come down there.
Mr. Casey, you have anything for us?
You know, I.
Silva, we're getting the same answer from you.
Yeah.
And we've all, I think, or most of us have asked the same question in different ways.
Is the board telling me they don't want to come down there?
Hold on. We've all asked the question. It's taller, we know this, we recognize this, but how does this affect you? Is it aesthetic? Does it have an impact on your farming operations?
One, two?
Is it just because you're angry because the communication was poor in your judgment?
It has nothing to do with my anger.
All right. And I'm not hearing one iota of information from you about how you're affected by this increased height.
I don't need you to chastise me about what.
No, it's not chastising. We're trying to get to the bottom.
Well, that's what it sounds like to me.
We're trying to get to the bottom of this.
It's not built the way I asked it to be built. This is not a minor project. It's a serious project, and I was serious about how it needed to be built.
Okay, stay there. Counsel, could you go over to the chair for a second? All right. It's, it's very clear to me, and I think everybody else who is on this board, that there has been a communication issue. I don't want to characterize it as a breakdown in communications, but there is a, there's an issue here. I think Mr. Silva's point is well taken, that conversations now need to be had. I think his point is well taken also that we go down and take a look at this site. And I told you that we didn't have a problem with that, and I'm telling you that we're going to schedule that. But in the meantime, folks, I want everybody who's involved directly in this project to begin to have constructive conversations about how to get to a resolution of this matter. We're talking about an increase in height that's about three and a half feet. That might not seem a lot to Valta, but it's an awful lot to Mr. Silva. And the communication, he keeps going back to communication. So, counsel, I know you're a very good communicator, and I know you gentlemen have had to deal with landowners throughout the country on these kinds of projects. And although I understand that you folks believe attempts have been made, Mr. Silva says otherwise. So I'm going to instruct you both right now, we're not going to go through this again another night where we started tonight. You're going to have your conversations. We will go out and do a site visit. You're going to have your conversations, and you're going to see if you can reach an accord. Because, Valta, reps, and Mr. Silva, if we are compelled to make a decision, someone is going to walk away very unhappy in this room. Sure you've heard that before from judges who say, you better, counsel, arrive at an agreement, because if you don't, I'm going to make the agreement, and somebody's not going to be happy with it. So the buck stops here, right? This is your chance to see if you can get together and work something out, communicate. Talk as reasonable gentleman. I think Mr. Silva's a reasonable person, and he has reasonable concerns. I think Valta has its own interests as well that it needs to be cognizant of and to protect as an ongoing business. Somewhere in there, there's got to be a way that we can satisfy the interests of both Mr. Silva believes that there's been a bait and switch going on, for lack of a better term. Valta would have us all believe otherwise, that they move forward on a good faith basis under a duly-issued and properly-issued building permit. So we get it. Again, we've read through all of this stuff already. We understand what your issues are, Mr. Silva, we do, and Valta as well. So, counsel, I would like for you to speak to Mr. Silva or one of Valta's representatives to see if you folks can have a civilized, gentlemanly discussion about what it would take to satisfy Mr. Silva, the landowner here. Fair? And if, if, if an accord can be reached, hallelujah. You know, I've spoken, I've used the bully pulpit. If it doesn't work, then we're going to make a decision, and we're going to make a decision the next time. In the meantime, if no one else has any other comments or concerns or points of discussion, and I'm not seeing anybody leaping to the, leaping to the microphone, what I would like to do is to schedule a site visit so we can come and visit you, Mr. Silva, and see, as you've asked us to see on two or three occasions tonight, your property. Valta too is obviously invited and all of its representatives, and maybe after we leave, you folks can have your discussion. We will not be part of that discussion at the site. We do not deliberate when we do site visits because of the requirements of the open meeting law. And I see you understand that, Ms. And I see you understand that, Mr. Silva, good. So we'll go out, we'll eyeball it. If we have any technical questions, we'll ask those. And if you folks would like to have a continued conversation after we leave, great.
Or before.
Or before. Thank you, Mr. Correa, or before. Yes, sir?
At that visit, can we take height measurements and tilt measurements?
I can't hear you very well.
At that meeting, can we take actual height measurements and tilt measurements?
Assuming that Mr. Silva doesn't have an issue with that. I think, again, rather than going through me on a lot of this stuff, you folks need to be talking. If you want to take measurements, talk to Mr. Silva. Okay, well, that's going to stop, okay? There will be at least one more conversation. I'm making sure of that. Okay, so I want you to have a good attitude about it, Mr. Silva. Okay. All right. Before we leave this case for tonight, I want to ask if anybody here who's attending would like to speak on this case. I hope I haven't intimidated him.
No, you can talk to me if you don't want to talk to him.
You know, it's rare that this board has to deal with stuff like this, this type of case. We're sitting, in a manner of speaking, in judgment of the planning board, in judgment of a former building commissioner. And this is difficult stuff typically. And thankfully, it doesn't come before us very often. But it does seem to me that if we can just get people talking, we can get to a point where maybe we can get to a satisfaction level. So, Mr. Silva, again, I implore you, please, keep an open mind. Talk to these folks, they're going to talk to you. And I see, maybe as a starting point for your discussion, you can go back to your letter, which you sent on, the one that I referred to before, dated August 25, 2020. It's very detailed, it's a good letter. And it has all your various points. So bring that letter to the conversation. And talk to them about each of those points and what they might be willing to do, if anything. Okay? Now, I have one technical question before we leave this behind, and it is this. If you folks decreased the tilt angle, which started at 35 and then you went to 25, if it went down, let's say to 15, would that bring the height down?
No, not at that point.
Probably get into, by trying to reduce the tilt by that far, it's going to start causing erosion, so you're going to affect all of your...
Okay, so we don't want to affect his property any more than it already is.
By trying to go down from the 35 back to 25, it was in a special use permit. That was, we've taken it down about as far as we could and still maintain the production as possible.
Okay, thank you for that. Counsel, good?
Yeah, I guess I would just say we, you know, in the spirit of compromise, that planning board modification theory was kind of compromised.
We're past that now.
Yeah.
We are well past that.
No, 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 no.
No, no, we're not, no, no. We're going to finish this in a moment, okay? No more planning board stuff. This is now ZBA, okay? We're making the decision, unless you guys make the decision for us, which is what we would prefer. Mr. Silva? Great. All right, let's, let's talk about a date to go to Mr. Silva's property for the site visit.
That was my question, by the way.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, calendar's out, board members?
Yep.
This is going to be a Saturday morning, Mr. Silva, 9 o'clock for you in the morning, okay?
I'm going to suggest...
No, 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 no. 9:00 AM to go visit your property. Okay, we're going to decide on a day.
I'm going to suggest the 16th.
16th of...
October.
Okay.
Because the previous weekend's the long weekend.
Correct. And this Saturday's too soon.
And this Saturday's too soon.
Possibility what?
You might be harvesting.
I'll be out of town on the 16th.
Okay, pick another day.
Well, we can go to the 23rd.
23rd.
That's a couple of days before the next meeting, so...
Okay, so we need to do it before the, no, earlier than the 16th, right? Preferably before the 16th.
Well, our choices are Saturday, the 2nd, which is this coming Saturday. I'm not available. The next Saturday is the 9th, it's the long weekend. I'm not available. So the next open dates were the 16th and the 23rd.
Can you interrupt your harvesting for a few minutes?
Yeah, I'll just stop.
Can you work us in?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. So October 16th at 9:00 in the morning. All right?
16th at what?
9:00 in the morning. Right?
Can I ask one question, Mr. Silva?
Yeah. No, to me.
I want to try to get our big faith communications started.
What's that? Oh, you're not available?
In reference to what you asked us to do, we tried to get back on the call and open our communications to try to resolve this before we have the site meeting out there. I'm asking when you start your harvest, so we can try to at least have the conversations, some of these conversations prior to you starting your harvest, because all this harvest is important. You're a grown farmer, I understand that, so I understand the importance of the harvest. And I'd like to get communications if we can. It's hard to be a part of a site, so I'm asking when you start the harvest, going to open a communication check. When you kind of start your harvest.
Yeah.
We'll go back to that email chain which you presented to the board. We'll go back to our, whoever started last in that email chain and restart that email chain.
Yeah, you know, we're not looking for, you know, you told me this, no, you didn't tell me that. We're not looking for recriminations at this point. Communication is what we're looking for, okay? So...
Can I ask, does Volta have access to the property right now, to their equipment?
No.
No?
There's no equipment here.
Well, the arrays are there, right?
Well, you need to talk to them.
All the structures.
The equipment that has been installed, all our equipment in our storage container.
So you... Okay.
And we have respect in this case, we have not accessed this since we finished the stuff.
Yeah, and you know, I'm sure Counsel will agree. When we try to resolve a case as attorneys, it's always best to try to do it face-to-face rather than over the phone. Now, I understand that Volta's on the West Bank. But to the extent that face-to-face conversations can occur, I think that would be helpful for Mr. Silva especially. We're used to doing it by phone, and I know in some instances, in your instance especially, you may need to do some of this over the phone. But just a word to the wise, if we're looking to do the most effective kind of negotiation possible here, face-to-face is always preferable. Okay, Mr. Silva? I don't know who will be face-to-face, I know you're local, so it may very well be you. There may be some phone calls as well. So, Mr. Silva, smile. So we're going to move to continue this case to the date of October 26th. October 26th.
So moved.
Okay, this, we don't have to...
We don't have to...
We don't have to vote on that?
Got it. Okay, October 26th, unless, Counsel, you notify me that there has been a resolution.
Amen.
Can we take a quick break?
I want to take a five-minute break. I need to rest my voice. Thank you. No more than five. All right, so let's go back into public session. And we have a second case on our agenda for this evening. And for those of you who just sat through all of that, thank you for your patience. I know that most of you are here for this case tonight. And again, I appreciate it. We're freezing up here, you guys cold?
Yeah, they just kind of turned on.
I just pushed the temperature.
You know, I'm in a full suit and I'm cold.
A gentleman would offer his jacket.
I will offer my jacket. Jim, you want my jacket?
I'm okay.
So this is the Save the Pine Barrens, Inc.
Do you want me to read?
Case, and I would defer to Ms. Clark because she's an excellent reader of the, of the heading of this case, the notice.
Um, I did have one question, I did have one question from the audience during the break, and that was why we heard the other case first. It had been previously scheduled, as the chairman mentioned earlier. It had been previously scheduled, and then for a lack of a quorum, we had to delay it to be opened up tonight. So that's why normally this would have been the first case, but it got pushed back. And this case is Public Hearing Case 131-2. The petitioner, Save the Pine Barrens, requesting enforcement of the Town of Carver bylaws against AD Makepeace, Inc. due to alleged past and continuing commercial earth removal activities in the residential agricultural district in the town of Carver that are occurring both with and without an earth removal permit. The sites in question are 59 Federal Road, Assessors Map 131, Lot 2-1C; 46 Federal Road, Assessors Map 131, Lot 2-4; Hammond Street, Assessors Map 131, Lot 1-4; the Golden Field Solar, Assessors Map 131, Lots 1-1, 1-2, 1-3, and 5-0; Federal, also known as Tahoma East, Solar, Assessors Map 131, Lots 2-1, 2-2, and 2-3; and Zero Hammond Street, Solar, Assessors Map 134, Lot 4-2.
Thank you. Who is here for Save the Pine Barrens, Inc., the petitioner in this case? Could you identify yourselves?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Speak right up.
My name is Meg Sheehan, I'm here representing Save the Pine Barrens, along with...
This is Mike O'Neill, also representing Pine Barrens.
Counsel, nice to see you both. Good evening again, thanks for your patience and everybody else who is here. Before we get into the merits of your concerns, and again, like I indicated in the previous case, we have gone through all of this paperwork. So I think we're pretty cognizant of what the issues are and what the concerns are from the petitioner's standpoint. But I have some procedural concerns that I'd like to address to Counsel for a minute before we get off and running. Is that okay? We know that earth removal is allowed in this town by right with approval by the Earth Removal Committee, so long as it's for agricultural purposes, under the general bylaws. Now, you know what we are. We are the Zoning Board of Appeals, and we deal with zoning issues. Is this not then the improper or incorrect forum to be hearing this case?
No, I think not, Mr. Chairman. This is, uh, uh, earth removal is permitted in the RA District only with approval from the Earth Removal Committee, so...
Under the general bylaws?
Yes, that, so if it's, if it does not have approval under the, by the Earth Removal Committee, then it is not permitted use.
Okay, so I think I heard Ms. Clark say that the projects about which you have concern, there are six of them.
Yes.
Three of them, I think you have identified as having been permitted by the Earth Removal Committee, and three have not been, based on your position, as expressed in your submissions.
Yes.
So at least insofar as those three, shouldn't you be before the Earth Removal Committee first? This is a general bylaw. We don't, you know, this is a bit outside of our parameters.
Sure. If I may address that, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Certainly, we have been to the Earth Removal Committee a number of times and addressed our concerns to them. And their concerns, those concerns relate to the compliance with the permits that were issued. However, this is a zoning issue, strictly a zoning issue. This, these are uses being allowed on residential and agricultural land, both without permits and with permits that are not being followed in terms of the zoning. It is a commercial and industrial use on a residential and agricultural lot.
And again, I understand that, I think the rest of us up here understand that as well. I'm still struggling with this being a zoning enforcement case versus a case which involves application of a general bylaw which comes within the jurisdiction of the Earth Removal Committee. And if you don't get the relief or the satisfaction that you want from the Earth Removal Committee, you have other remedies. I'm not sure that this is the proper form. So it's not like you're without a remedy or remedies, and we can go over what they might be, because I've thought of three or four. But I have an issue with that piece. So I want to step back and see what the other board members might think about this concern, about whether the ZBA is in fact the proper forum for this. Because what's being alleged here has to do with the Earth Removal Committee, which is acting under a general bylaw, not a zoning bylaw. And the folks at home and for the people in this room, this town has two sets of bylaws. They have zoning bylaws, and you just heard a lot about that in the preceding case, right? We also have general bylaws, which are not zoning bylaws typically. They address all other different kinds of sorts of things. That's not, that's not our house. That's a different house. So, board members, what do you say? Don't all start talking.
Well, I don't mind telling you, I read through all the materials, and I would need some guidance from somebody to tell me whether or not what is in the materials is accurate. Because the way I understood the materials, they have gone, they've talked to the enforcement officer, they've talked to agriculture, and nothing's been done. So I would need to understand from your viewpoint what their other remedies would be, other than us.
Who else would like to be heard? Before I respond to that.
Like, again, we've read through the materials and I think one of the concerns you have is that you're asking this board to enforce the zoning enforcement officer to take action?
That's correct. We're seeking a cease and desist against all AD Makepeace earth removal operations in the town of Carver based on this illegal operation that's been going on for over 10 years.
And it's just come to your attention now?
It's come to our attention over many years, and we've worked very hard to research all of these issues and to document all of the violations that we're presenting here tonight. We have documentary evidence and a video to show that we believe should be shown tonight to explain our case.
And this is the Save the Barrens, Inc. position that you're determining that they have commercial and industrial use going on?
It is our observation. It is the video footage that we would like to show you. And it is the opinion of our expert, and I have an affidavit here today.
Is that the one that was sent to us?
Yes. By Mr. Garner.
I read it.
Okay.
I mean, the affidavit just seemed to be observations.
Yes, his observations.
There was no conclusion at the end that said, "And therefore, it is my conclusion and my professional expertise that this is a commercial and industrial."
His observation is that there are no agricultural uses. There are no cranberry bogs, reservoirs, or ponds on the locations where the Earth Removal Committee granted permits year after year for agricultural operations that were never built.
But the Earth Removal granted them.
Earth Removal granted them.
So the oversight is with them.
No, the land is being used for an improper purpose, and it is this board's obligation to enforce the zoning bylaws to prevent unlawful uses of land.
Ms. Sheehan? Ms. Sheehan. Just hold that thought for a minute. What zoning bylaw are they not in compliance with?
They're not in compliance with the Table of Uses. Table of Uses says that any uses not permitted under this bylaw are prohibited. And if you look under Earth Removal, it says it's permitted only with approval from the Earth Removal Committee.
Under the general bylaw?
Okay, that's...
And that's the hurdle that I see that you folks have.
But we're just... But that's in the zoning bylaw. It's in the zoning bylaw. They are performing, in three cases, they're performing uses without going to the Earth Removal, without getting any Earth Removal approval. So that is a zoning violation. They're doing a prohibited use.
That's a general bylaw violation.
If I may explain, they are using land that is zoned agricultural and residential for commercial mining, regardless of what the Earth Removal Permit said. The Earth Removal Permit was granted on the premise that there would be an agricultural use on the first three sites. There is no agricultural use. AD Makepeace submitted four sets of plans to the Earth Removal Committee, showing that they would build cranberry bogs and reservoirs. They are not building cranberry bogs and reservoirs. They are conducting commercial earth removal activities right adjacent to reed custom soils, where their website brags that they have an infinite supply of fine, high-quality sand that they are selling for commercial uses.
We're starting to dive a little bit into the merits. I was asked a couple of minutes ago about what other remedies you might have, if this board determines that it's not the proper form for this case. And I see in some of your paperwork that you folks are considering, or perhaps may even have filed, I'm not sure, one of those 10-person suits. Clearly, you have an avenue straight to court if you choose to use it, and you could ask for TRO, and off to the races everybody is, without having to deal with this jurisdictional issue at this local level. But if you want to stay at the local level, another possible avenue is to go back to the Earth Removal Committee. Get on their agenda. Explain to them, as I think you probably have to some degree already, what your concerns are. If they are unresponsive, and you believe that you still have a winning case, then I think at that point, your pathway is even clearer to court. But the Earth Removal Committee, I think, is probably the most appropriate local board to address these issues at the outset.
First of all, we have not filed suit under 214-78. We serve notices under Chapter 214...
I did see that.
And if I may...
Yes.
And I'm sorry if I sound frustrated, but we have been to the Earth Removal Committee in March, April, May, and June, and July. We have gotten on their agenda. We have presented all of these facts. We have discussed informally and formally with the chair and other members of the committee these violations. And I would like to address the three violations that did not get Earth Removal permits, and those are the three Borrego solar sites where earth removal was conducted without a permit Mr. Kane signed under oath in a planning board application and an application to the state that earth would be removed from the site, under the guise that it was going to be used on his cranberry bogs. Now, the volumes of earth that we're talking about are tremendous. This is a ruse, and the board can choose to rest on a procedural, some kind of procedural excuse in terms of not wanting to address this. But there's incredible destruction of the environment that we're seeing of a unique and globally rare pine barrens ecosystem, threatening our water supply, and it's completely unregulated and in violation of your zoning bylaws, as well as the Earth Removal bylaws.
Okay. Well, Ms. Sheehan, let me say this, and I know that I speak for the rest of the members of this board as well, including the new ones. This board does not look for excuses. If there is an issue that is properly joined and comes before this board, we will address it. So having said that, I do want to point out to both of you that this town has had the misfortune over the last year of having no less than three or four building commissioners go through that office. And I suspect strongly, and tell me otherwise, please, if I'm wrong, that the current building commissioner, who is now full-time and ensconced in office, that you've had nothing to do with him up to this point. Am I correct? His name is Paul Bouja.
Bouja.
Bouja, Paul Bouja. Does that name mean anything to either one of you?
All I can tell you is that no one from the building commissioner's office ever responded to our numerous inquiries.
Okay. Well, those folks, and I understand that, Ms. Sheehan, but those folks are no longer with the town. Those folks who chose, for whatever reason, not to respond, and I hear the frustration, I would be frustrated too. But those people are no longer part of this town and no longer in that office. So one of the other ideas I had, listening to you, was perhaps outreach to the new building commissioner. Might be appropriate. You might not think that that is going to get you any further than where you've gotten so far. But as you heard in the last case, I'm a big believer in communication, and perhaps that person, together with further outreach to the Earth Removal Committee and the folks at Makepeace, because I know you had that meeting with them before, that's in your submissions, perhaps with some new faces, you might be able to get a little bit further. And of course, as I said, your opportunity to go to court and ask for a temporary restraining order is always available to you. Now, I have one other procedural issue, and then I'm going to withdraw and let the rest of the board members speak, and you folks speak and rejoinder as well. This, too, is a procedural issue. And it goes to what you just mentioned, Ms. Sheehan, which is that you had asked for enforcement from the then-building commissioner via, I think, three separate letters. One dated April 6, 2021, one dated May 13, 2021, and one dated June 29, 2021. Does that sound right?
Yes.
Okay. So we know that under Chapter 40A, Section 7, the building inspector has 14 days to act on a request for zoning enforcement, and that's in your paperwork, as it should be. And so I look at the last of those three dates, which is June 29, I think I said?
Yes.
And at that point, if you have not filed an application for enforcement before the applicable board, in this case, our board, if you continue to maintain that the ZBA is the proper form, you've got to get that over to us within 30 days. You've missed the filing deadline. You've missed your statute of limitations on this case. Now, again, I'm not looking for reasons to evade getting to the merits. And I want to say for the record that the allegations that you and Ms. Sheehan are presenting are extremely serious. And I think anybody reading through these submissions, looking at the photographs, would have to have a certain level of concern. And we know in this day and age, climate change and environmental issues are very much in the forefront of everybody's mind and in the political arena. So I guess the one thing that I take objection to is that this board would ever look for an excuse to evade getting to the merits on an issue where the issue is properly before us. I think that you've got a general bylaw issue in this case, which calls into question whether you're at the proper form here at the ZBA. And if we acknowledge that there is a zoning issue, that you are at the proper form, it appears as if you've missed the statute of limitations.
No, no, Mr. Chairman, I respectfully disagree.
That's state law. That's not local law.
I understand. The previous letters were not identical to the letter that we filed on June 29, the request for enforcement, asking for six specific sites. The other ones were much more general, they weren't specific. Plus the fact that there was no response to either one, to any one of them. So therefore, there is nothing, there's no actual response, which is a separate issue. Now, we have to... So where there's no response at all, where the statute mandates that the building commissioner respond, he must respond, he shall respond according to the statute, he didn't, no response.
He has 14 days to respond. I agree with you. That's under Section 7.
And he's mandated to respond. We have no response. So that's a defect right there, that he has not responded. So therefore, we did a very focused, specific request on June 29, which was not the same as the other ones, and that, and so that is properly before this board for consideration.
Most respectfully, Section 15 of Chapter 40A requires that you get before us on a zoning issue, assuming this is in fact a zoning issue, within 30 days of the expiration of that 14 days that the state law, Chapter 40A, gives to the building commissioner. Now, I grant you that there was no response to any of those letters. That's not a good thing, and Carver can't be proud of that. But some of that might have been because there was a lot of turnover in the office. For whatever reason, there was no response. That triggers the 30-day period. That's Section 15 under 40A. Now, you're shaking your head, but I can read it to you. I don't want to do that, but you know it as well as I do.
I know that's what it says, but it's a catch 22. He doesn't respond at all. He's mandated to respond, he doesn't respond, doesn't respond. So he do a focused demand for enforcement, and he still doesn't respond. So we filed within 30 days of that, of that response. So where we have no active response from which to appeal, there were... Where there is no active, actual response from which to appeal, then we have another appeal period.
And that appeal period would have begun on June 30?
No, it would not. He received it on July 1.
Okay.
The appeal period is 30 days from July 1.
Okay. And what would that have taken you to? July 30, right?
30 days...
From July 1 is July 30?
No, no.
Or July, was it 31 days?
He has 14 days to respond, and it's 30 days from the expiration of the 14 days to respond.
You're still beyond the timeframe.
No.
Yes.
No, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, no. We've calculated this very carefully. Under Chapter 7, he has 14 days to respond. He received the demand on July 1. So then, and then the appeal is 30 days from the expiration of the 14 days. And we calculated it out to the day, and it was filed on time. So it was in 30 days of the 30-day expiration.
When was this case filed?
This case was filed on August 16.
No, it wasn't. It was filed on September 2. And you know why? Because you folks didn't file your filing fee with it. Your application was not perfected. It wasn't perfected until the filing fee came in. And I have an application here that's dated September 2 from you folks. So with all due respect, I think you have a very challenging procedural problem in this case on both of these points. And I'll be quiet and let the rest of the board members speak. Mr. Barrington, do you have anything to say?
I have nothing at this moment.
Ms. Mello?
This permitting department stamp of August 16, enclosed for filing as the appeal to the Zoning Board of Appeals, that doesn't count for him?
No.
It wasn't paid?
No, it wasn't paid. That's what I just said. It wasn't paid. It wasn't paid until September 2. Thank you. Ms. Clark?
There was, there's a lot of sloppy work in this. You know, the letter dated June 29 was sent to Robert Francis. Robert Francis left the position in December of 2020. And Mr. Banda started on January 5 of this year, and he left the position in September, I think it was, or August. So a letter that is sent to, it was sent to the position, and I did track down through our planner, if a letter is sent to Bob Francis, did Jim Banda pick it up? And he said, yes, he would have looked at it somewhere along the line. But both, part-timers, 19 hours. I was told that he investigated it by the town planner and decided to take no action, but I'm gathering that he did not convey that information to you.
No.
No. No.
And if I may respond regarding the filing fee, the reason it was delayed in filing is because the assessors office was calculating the fee for the butters list, and I was asked, and I personally came here and was asked to wait until that was calculated before paying the filing fee.
There's nothing in the instructions, in the Zoning Board of Appeals instructions for an application such as this specifying any filing fee at all.
If I could ask again, you've had no correspondence with our full-time building commissioner at all?
We filed the zoning, the enforcement request, that letter that you have.
Yeah, he wasn't here then.
Well, we, well, Ms. Sheehan...
Have you spoken to, I mean, one of the issues is you're asking the zoning board to make our zoning enforcement officer enforce the Earth Removal Committee's special permit. As I, one of your complaints was that you had no enforcement from the zoning enforcement officer, so I'm asking, we have a full-time building commissioner since around the 1st of August, have you had a conversation? Pick up the phone.
I have picked up the phone many times and called many people. I have received no responses.
Have you talked to Mr. Bouja? That's what I'm asking. I didn't ask for anybody else.
No, I'm not aware of the revolving door at the building commissioner's office. I'm sorry. I have filed some things in writing and in emails, and if this was such a serious matter, it's quite incomprehensible as to why no one has responded to our written requests, including the Earth Removal Committee.
Anything further?
Nope.
Mr. Pore.
So it's, for both of you feel, from your legal opinions, that this issue should be before this board, yes?
Yes.
So we did reach out to town council, and we asked her to take a look at this and to give us her opinion, and she addressed some of the things that have been mentioned previously, but her final statement is, "In my opinion, without indication of the Earth Removal Committee that AD Makepeace is somehow in violation of their permit, there's little opportunity for the Zoning Board of Appeals to challenge the use or enforce a permit issued pursuant to the general bylaws and not the zoning bylaw." So town council feels differently than the both of you.
To be clear, we're not asking you to enforce the Earth Removal Permit. We are asking you to enforce your zoning bylaws that prohibit commercial activity on residential land. Someone may claim that it's under a permit, but in plain view, this land is being used for a commercial operation.
And your claim is that this falls under a zoning bylaw, and everything I've heard so far says that it falls under a general bylaw.
Well, I will point out that three of the projects, three of the sites, have no Earth removal... earth removal permit. So you cannot rely on that excuse for those three sites.
There is only violation. The zoning bylaw has, has a table of uses. Anything not permitted is prohibited. Earth removal is permitted in the RA district only with approval of the earth removal committee.
Through its general bylaws.
Well, however, 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 yes, that would be through a general bylaws.
And I think we're, we're going circular now. This is the same argument that we've been making.
But for those three sites where there is no, we can't enforce the, the earth removal committee permit before the earth removal committee, because there is none. So the only recourse is this board.
Let's go back to something before I get to Mr. Casey for a minute, that Ms. Clark mentioned, which is conversations. Assuming that there are three mining operations that are ongoing without proper permitting, without any permitting at all, have you thought about speaking to the earth removal committee about these three specific operations and saying, look, issue your permit or not, but we need some action taken on this so that we can move forward and decide what we want to do?
I'd like to clarify that the three sites where no earth removal occurred, most of the work is already done there. We're pointing those out to you because it shows how AD Makepeace has been skirting and evading the earth removal permits and conducting commercial mining on agricultural land without permits.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. And I think that's all well said, and it's articulate, but it's not the point that I'm trying to make, or the question that I was trying to ask, which is, has this operation of AD Makepeace, as alleged, with regard to these three particular sites, been discussed by anybody from Pine Barrens and earth removal?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
At meetings and in personal conversations with the former chair and the current chair.
And I note that there's nothing in your submission specific about any action that might have been taken by the earth removal committee, any votes with regard to this. Can you help me with that?
Sure. There have been no votes. Mr. Garrison, when he was first informed as the chair of these activities, his, his action was to call up Jim Kane and let him know that Jim's understanding of the earth removal bylaw was wrong. And that, yes, he did have to pay earth removal fees for sand and gravel taken off his property, even if he was selling it to other cranberry bog owners. That's recorded in a video of the meeting. So yes, there have been discussions.
Do you have that video here?
It's on Facebook. I'd be happy to send it to you.
I don't have Facebook.
I'd be happy to send it to you.
Figure out another way.
And it's on our YouTube channel as well. So those are the kinds of conversations that we have had, and those are the kinds of responses that the earth removal committee has provided in response to what you call very serious allegations.
Yeah, these are very serious allegations, yes.
And photographs and testimony, live testimony from people like myself. I'm an attorney with 38 years of practice in environmental law. I've formally worked at the Attorney General's Office enforcing environmental laws. I am not making this up. And neither is our expert, Mr. Patrick Garner, who himself is, has 30 years' experience as a hydrologist, soil expert, and wetland scientist.
Thank you for that, Ms. Yen. Mr. Casey, on the issue of proper jurisdiction and filing deadlines, anything that you want to add or inquire about?
Yeah, just a quick thought. The Pine Barrens. When this came about in the newspapers months ago, it kind of piqued my interest because I've, I've had knowledge of the three largest Pine Barrens in our area. It was only because I was a fisherman and a member of the armed forces. As you probably know, that one of the largest areas of Pine Barrens is down on the military, down on Cape Cod. Second one is over here, right next to the camp.
That's a, sorry?
No, right over here, in Plymouth. Yeah. I used to fish over there, on one of the small ponds over there. And the third one is down on the other end. And they're, they're very unusual sites, and most people don't even know what they are. They walk through them without knowing, and so forth and so on. So I wonder what, what the inference would be when one of our officers sees paperwork from you people. Is this part of what you're attempting to do as far as the excavation, to save this particular thing, like I've read about in the newspaper, or is it just in general?
Well, Save the Pine Barrens is a nonprofit, membership organization whose mission is to protect, steward, and preserve the rare Atlantic coastal Pine Barrens forest, one of three on earth that extends throughout southeastern Massachusetts and Cape Cod and part of the islands. So that is our mission, yes.
Yeah. And Chris, you're probably well aware of the fact that down on the military installation, they have our face housing. And on the other side of the house, housing units is full of Pine Barrens. But the problem is, the jet fuel that's been spilled over the years finds a way to get to the base of John's pond. And before it gets there, it goes through some of the Pine Barrens, some of the biggest on Cape Cod. And as a result, that water was polluted for that part of the, over a year down there, with fish kills and everything else. For the worst part, it transferred to the next pond, going towards Wareham. I'm just bringing this up, you know, it's, it's a unique subject. Not many people know what's going, you know, knows what a Pine Baron is. Even when hunting down there years ago, when I was a kid growing up, and, you know, pheasants and, you know, quail, they opened it up, and that was great area for them. They had the small bushes and the white sand and so forth.
Yeah. Yes, thank you, Mr. Casey. If I may respond to that point, yes, the Pine Barrens here in southeastern Mass are extremely rare, and they're very fragile. And they're characterized by large amounts of sand and gravel, and by forests and soils that have built up over tens of thousands of years. And when we strip mine and remove the trees, clearcutting them, and remove the vegetation and the stumps, and take out millions of cubic yards of sand and gravel, we remove the protection of those soils and forests that they provide for our sole source drinking water aquifer that all seven of the towns in this region rely on. So unregulated strip mining is threatening our groundwater supply, and we only have one. We all rely on the Plymouth Carver sole source aquifer. And Carver participated in the sole source aquifer committee findings, and one of the findings in that report is that unregulated strip mining threatens the water supply. So that's part of our mission and part of why we're here tonight.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you both. You presented very articulately, and I think you've done your very best to answer all of our questions at this point. I see counsel standing at attention there in the center of the room. So if the two of you could withdraw for a moment and allow him to sit at the table so he can have a mic, you can identify yourself and your relationship to this case. Thank you.
And I apologize for standing at attention in front of you. I, I must admit that I was concerned that we were meandering into substance before resolving the jurisdictional issue. And I was concerned about the notion of providing a forum for, for argument that I don't think is supported by the facts. And I don't want to get into that either, because, and by, by making my point, I guess I'm, I'm bringing this in that direction. I, I do want to address the jurisdictional issue. I moreover want to say that if...
Excuse me, can I have your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Yes, Mike Crossen.
Crossen.
Crossen. I'm a partner at Foley and Lardner in Boston. I'm a resident of the Cape.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you all, by the way, for giving me the opportunity to, to speak to you this evening. I am grateful for the work you do and, and for this opportunity. I, I will say this...
You are here representing Makepeace, are you? Thank you.
One would think after 37 years myself of practicing law, I'd know enough to tell you that. Thank you very much. I'm counsel to AD Makepeace Company. Indeed, I have been counsel to Makepeace for about 20 years. And this is unusual for an attorney, but I'm going to note that I am proud of that. I've enjoyed working for them. I wanted to make the point that if you were to move beyond the jurisdictional issue, I then would indeed request that this be moved. And I will tell you why to a different time, that is. And I'll tell you why. It is unusual in a forum like this and in this context that the employees, the persons who work for a company outnumber the persons that come from vast, from various places around the Commonwealth to listen to the arguments of groups like Save the Pine Barrens. But they are here, and I'm sure they can't hear me, and I doubt that they could hear you folks. However, I believe that this issue ought to be resolved on the procedural issues. In complete candor, I don't even, I can't, they can't make a colorable argument to support their claims. And I want to address that for a moment, if I may.
Please.
And what I'd like to do first is address the second one you brought up, because it is incomprehensible to me that counsel would argue that the, two points, excuse me. One is that what the, it is worse than what you characterized it as being, because what in fact they did by giving you three letters, including one in June, was they simply tried to bootstrap themselves forward to avoid the mistake they had made by not appealing to you after the first letter and after the failure purportedly to respond to that.
Or the second letter.
Or the second letter.
What about the third letter?
It, my point is, it is even worse, because the question of, of timing and, and point in time at which they should have appealed should be judged by the first letter.
Why do you say that?
Because it was the first, because according to the statute, as you correctly note, the building inspector has 14 days to respond at that time.
Doesn't the clock restart after the second letter is sent?
No, because they could, you know what they could do? If that were the case, they could give you another letter tomorrow to cure the other defect. And the reality is, you simply can't do that. That is not how the law works. And I know you know that, by the way. I'm not trying to preach to you about the practice of law. That is one concern I have with respect to the lapse of time issue. The other point I would make is, it is utterly incomprehensible to me that folks who have been practicing law for as long as I have would say to you, well, we didn't know there was a filing fee. They did know there was a filing fee. There are always filing fees. You have to be able to pay for this to be published and to notice those persons who are within the appropriate distance of the site. So that is, that's, that is an absolutely incomprehensible argument, if I may. I want to get now to the other point, which in truth, I find really compelling. The, I find them both compelling. I am, I am more compelled by the first one. Let me just, to this, by this one, for this reason. The general bylaw makes it very clear that the committee with jurisdiction over earth removal is the earth removal committee. In fact, it states that enforcement of the earth removal bylaw is with the earth removal committee. They have argued to you that they should be able to come before this committee because it is a zoning issue, because it is referenced in the table of uses in the zoning bylaw. It is only referenced there as a cross-reference. I would note, by the way, it is in fact by a cross, that it is pointed, that we are directed to where one would really look for the jurisdiction over this issue, noting that in the residential agricultural district, that, that earth removal is allowed by right, provided that one has received an earth removal permit from the earth removal committee under the general bylaw. It is indisputable. Now, if, if you folks need more argument with respect to that issue, I'm more than happy to brief it, along with, I presume, counsel to Save the Pine Barrens. But I do understand that your counsel has advised you and that you have reached your own independent determinations with respect to this.
Let me interrupt you there for a second.
Excuse me, yes.
After having sat on this board for as long as I have, and most of the rest of us also for many years, it, it is sometimes the case that I will disagree with town council.
Of course.
So I don't march, and I want everybody to know this, I don't march in lockstep with what town council opines in every case.
I understand.
Okay? So if, if we get an opinion, we pay attention to it, we may be influenced by it or persuaded by it, or in my case anyway, sometimes not at all. Proceed.
I, I understand. I think that's right. To be perfectly candid, my clients disagree with me all the time. That, that having been said, I do believe that it is very clear where the jurisdiction lies on this particular issue. I don't even believe it is arguable, to be perfectly candid.
So let me ask you this.
Yes, please.
The Pine Barrens folks, sincere as they are, express great frustration with the town, most especially the earth removal committee and predecessor building commissioners, trying to get their attention. They now come before the ZBA because they haven't gotten anybody to pay attention to them in these other, you know, in these other forms, whether it be the earth removal committee or some other committee, or the building commissioner's office, or the planning office. Nobody, they say, has been paying any attention to them, despite what they feel is strong evidence that they have accumulated. So now they're here. They're improperly here?
They are improperly here.
Where do they go?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple...
Where do they go?
They should go back to the earth removal committee, or they should go to court. If they, if they believe that they have valid claims to pursue, they should take those either back to the jurisdictional committee in this town or go to court. The reality is that while they voiced their frustration, they have, their frustration is a function of the, the committee determining that their claims were not accurate and made a determination that they were, they declined enforcement, the earth removal committee declined enforcement. It isn't that they didn't pay attention to them, they simply didn't agree with them. Therefore, they, yes, they may well have an appellate right, they may well be able to go to court. But this forum, the zoning board of appeals, is not that forum, sir.
Anything further?
I have nothing further. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Yes, in, one rejoinder, please, and then we'll move on to public comment.
Yes. First of all...
Counsel, at the end, suggested the same remedies that I mentioned to you at the beginning, which is, you know, you can go to court and apply for a temporary restraining order. Or you can go back to the earth removal committee and the new building commissioner and have at it again. And if that doesn't work, back to court, if that's what you're so inclined to do.
Well, of course, to apply for a temporary, temporary restraining order, you have to show that you've exhausted all your administrative remedies.
And I think you've, I think you're suggesting that, aren't you?
No, 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 I'm not suggesting that. First of all, with respect to the, the first point made, that we should have appealed under the first, under the first letter. The first letter was very different than the January, than the June 29th letter. The first letter was an omnibus letter. It wasn't specific at all. It just made a shotgun complaint about, about AD Makepeace and asked for cessation of all activities, whereas the June 29th letter was very specific about six sites, about specific, specific violations. So to say that the appeal should have been from, from the first letter, that's just two, two different species, two different animals. Secondly, how can we not know that there was a filing fee? That's very simple. How, how were we supposed to know that there's a filing fee? We look at, we look carefully at all the instructions. There's nothing, there's no regulation published that there was a filing fee. As a matter of fact, the filing fee isn't any specific number. It's calculated according to a complicated calculation, according to the Butters, the number... number of butter's. So the filing fee wasn't ascertained until some later time. So, and we paid the filing fee when, when we were told what it was. So, secondly, the comment was made that the reference in the, that there was a cross-reference in the zoning bylaw. Well, that's no argument at all. It's in the zoning bylaw. The argument that we're making about the violation of, of the use, that's in the zoning bylaw. The fact that it cross-references to the Earth Removal Committee doesn't make, doesn't divest this, this board of any jurisdiction, it doesn't detract one iota from the fact that this is a zoning violation.
Ms. Sheen, briefly, please.
Briefly. I wish this matter had been briefed. Mr. Iranamo is sitting here, and he can confirm to you that the Earth Removal Committee has not responded to our request for enforcement. They have not said that they are not going to do anything. They have talked and talked about procedures and policies and trying to improve their enforcement mechanisms, but counsel for Makepeace is absolutely wrong when he says that that's where our remedy is and that's where we should be going to, and that we've been denied relief there. Again, there's been no action by the Earth Removal Committee, except to go along with what I will only call a farce. And if you can look at three or four sets of plans from GAF Engineering that are included in my affidavit that I obtained on an earth, on a public records request from this town in which A.D. Makepeace said it was going to build agricultural projects that are never built, in fact, even submitted the same plans twice in 2011 and 2017, showing cranberry bogs being built at the corner of Cranberry Road and Federal Road in 2011, and those bogs aren't built, the permits are expired, and they are continuing to conduct earth removal activities. If you would like to ignore that, that is your choice. We would request, however, that you make a clear decision and take a vote as to whether you are denying or granting our request for enforcement.
Okay. Again, the, the use of the word ignore, I think, is a little bit over the top. We don't ignore cases that are properly before us. But what I'm hearing in this case a little bit is a bit like the previous case, which is, at some point, conversations were going on. At some point, those conversations stopped out of frustration. I don't know whether it was your side or, to some degree, the town side, but there was a level of frustration. And I'm wondering now whether you folks would be willing to have a resumption of those conversations that were had earlier on, some months ago, apparently, before these letters were sent out to the previous building commissioner. Is that something you'd be open to?
We are continuing to have conversations with various members and officials in the town. We've never ended any conversations whatsoever.
That's, that's good to hear. And counsel for Makepeace, would you be willing to continue having discussions with Pine, Save the Pine Barrens folks on the issue of how best to address their concerns?
I'm always willing to sit down and talk to Mr. Chairman.
Okay, but I see you're smirking a little, like you don't believe that's going to come to a-
That's how I meant. He wants to talk, and I stopped him.
All right. So I, I see in their submissions that there were attempts to continue conversations with at least one Makepeace official, I think referred to by the CEO.
I have never had conversations with Mr. Kane. In fact, all he has done is besmirch and slander my character.
All right, okay, all right. So at some point, somebody had some conversation with Mr. Kane. Is Mr. Kane here?
Yes, I am, sir.
All right. I remember reading in the paperwork that there was a conversation that you had at some point with the folks on the Save the Pine Barrens side of things, and I don't know how far that conversation went or who it was with, but I'm suggesting again that maybe conversations should fire up again to see if there is any way that we can address the concerns that they bring to this board, not on the procedural issue, but they have concerns about mining going on on three sites that have not been permitted by the Earth Removal Committee, and they have concerns about three other sites where permits have been issued, but apparently mining is going on for non-agricultural purposes, which would not make them exempt. So, again, without getting into procedural or jurisdictional issues, I'm asking you whether you'd be willing to have ongoing constructive and productive conversations with the folks on this side to see if you can arrive at an understanding and arrangement to address these concerns, because I fear that regardless of what we do, this case is going to end up in court, and it's going to result not only in, I would assume, fairly substantial legal fees, because that's what attorneys do, is they charge by the hour, and this is going to be a complicated and lengthy case involving a lot of evidence-taking, and it's not going to be good for your company either, from a public relations standpoint. So all the more reason to have these conversations. Are you willing to do that?
Sir, in order to have useful conversations, both parties have to be operating with good faith. We will operate with good faith.
Thank you. That's all I need to hear.
On the other side. And we'll also simply note, sir, that contrary to what you've heard this evening, the Earth Removal Board received a complaint, then scheduled a Saturday morning inspection of the three permitted sites that are operating within their permits, with an independent engineer allowed on our property without complete acceptance, engineer from Margaret Sheehan, participated in that, those inspections. Those inspections found that we were in the way. Projects underway are not complete by their very definitions, sir.
Okay, so again-
We are required to sign a permit unhappy to meet with anyone who is-
Thank you. Thank you. But I know there's a lot to be said on the merits of this case, and I know we keep slipping in that direction, and I need to keep us focused on the jurisdictional issue. For those of you who do not understand the word jurisdiction, it means the authority to hear a case. It's the power to hear a case. That's all jurisdiction means. And we've identified a couple of issues, even before we reached out to town council, I identified some issues on the procedural or jurisdictional end. And so that's, that's something that we're going to have to consider if we're compelled to come to a decision on how or if at all to proceed with this. So in the interim, what I would like to suggest with input from the board members is a continuance of this hearing to allow for, hopefully, productive and constructive conversations to occur. I know that this, this has to be constructive on both sides. That's all I'm asking. If you come back and report that that's not workable, that we can't, we can't get to an agreement, then we will make that agreement. Ms. Sheen, we will not duck this, and if you think that a jurisdictional or procedural issue is ducking, you should know better. You and I are both attorneys. We know that the jurisdictional issue is first. Thank you. Let me ask you, ladies and gentlemen, who would like to approach and have a few words? I observe that it's getting late, but I'm prepared certainly to listen to whoever would like to be heard for a brief minute or two, each of them. Would anybody like to be heard? There's a lot of people here, and we'll try to get to as many as would like to speak, if anybody would like to speak. Don't everybody come up at once? Yes, ma'am?
Thank you for letting me speak.
Bring that nice and close and speak up.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Cheryl Heller. I'm the president and founder of the Southeastern Massachusetts Pine Barrens Alliance.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. You might think that I'm 100% environmentalist and maybe against A.D. Makepeace, but I'll tell you that our group has received funding for BAT research and other projects from A.D. Makepeace when they were doing their neighborhood fund. So I am very interested in this. My, maybe I don't quite understand the jurisdictional issue, but I know that Ms. Sheen and the Save the Pine Barrens group had a presentation to make, which we didn't get to hear. And I just, I know it's brief, it was going to be a, a five-minute presentation with some comments after, and I don't understand why this board can't hear that presentation and let A.D. Makepeace respond to that while we're here.
Okay, well, we're not, we're not saying that we won't listen to it or can't hear it because there are procedural or jurisdictional issues. What I'm saying right now is I'd like to hear from you folks, and then because of the time, we may have to come back at that at our next meeting.
Okay, because I, I really would like to hear their presentation. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks for coming tonight. Who else would like to be heard?
Thank you. My name is Frank Mann. I'm the vice president of the Southeastern Massachusetts Pine Barrens Alliance.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you. I'm here as reflected in Mr. Casey's comments, because the vast majority of people still, despite the work that we do to build alliances and to educate people about the Pine Barrens, most people don't know about it. Carver is in the heart of the, of this globally rare eco-region. It should be something that everyone in this community is working to protect, is aware of, and understands the value of. As Ms. Sheen was talking about, it has many things, it contributes to the quality of life, not only the protection of the aquifer, but the protection of rare species. There are over 200 rare species, a plant and animal, in this eco-region, and that contributes directly to the quality of our air and the quality of our ground and the flowers that grow and the birds that we have. And once you start stripping these things away for temporary financial gain, you do great permanent damage, and that's why we're here. We're, we're generally not involved in these issues, jurisdictional or not. We're generally trying to build alliances with other groups. We work with Mass Audubon, we work with Manomet, we work with Wildlands Trust. We actually just won a municipal vulnerability preparedness grant through the town of Plymouth, but mainly funded, mainly organized by environmental groups in Plymouth. So again, that's why I'm here. I think that whether or not there are jurisdictional issues that prevent you from fully debating this issue and the legalities involved, that more needs to be done in this community and every community to understand the value of the Pine Barrens and how critical it is to protecting your quality of life, your way of life. The cranberries wouldn't be growing in Carver if it wasn't for the streams that were here initially. Essentially, you're strangling the vine that grew Cranberry Town, USA. Thank you.
I think I can speak for everybody on this board that we understand how critical this area is, this Pine Barrens area is. Again, we've read through all the paperwork. We get it, but we are compelled to follow the law. So as sympathetic as we might be on some of the issues that we have slipped into, some of the merit issues tonight, where we're putting, by doing that, the cart before the horse, I would suggest, but we get it. We get it. But we can't make decisions based upon our own personal views or our own biases and sympathies. That's not what we do. We identify the law that is applicable, we apply it to the facts, and we follow wherever that takes us. Who else would like to be heard? Yes?
I want to say we'll take one or five minutes.
Oh, we can't do that, but if you could go up to the microphone and maybe give us your best two minutes, that would be wonderful. And bring that microphone up nice and close so we can all hear you.
My name is Seth Calio. I live on Tremont Street in South Carver, and I'm also a previous employee of A.D. Makepeace Company.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Yes. I maintain that when the Pine Barrens people attack Makepeace Company, they are attacking a company that has done more and given up more for the environment than any other organization or company in this area has done. I'd like to start with, let's look at Cape Cod, this is Musco County. The Makepeace family owns Sandy Neck in the early 1900s, and due to the fact that the state was threatened to make an eminent domain of that property, they decided to sell it, and they didn't get much money for it. I think it was something like $79,000. And that, that property is six miles long, bordering on Cape Cod Bay, is partly in, in basketball and partly in sandwich. And the pot and the sandwich was finally sold around 1960. And for that, they, I think they got $4,500 or something. What do you think that property is worth today? Now, also, when I started to work for the Makepeace Company in 1950, they had over 600 acres of cranberry bog on Cape Cod.
1950?
1950.
You still working for them?
No, no, I've been retired.
I hope you got a nice pension.
Well, I should be. But at that time, they had over 600 acres on Cape Cod. And because of our mentalism and the rapid growth of housing on the Cape Cod building, they had to get out of there. It was very, very hard to run that business from Wayham especially. And so I looked at the aerial photos on Google the other day, and those cranberry bogs that Makepeace sold out. You can even tell that they are a lot of cranberry bogs now, they're all grown up. Now, at, at the same time that the Makepeace Company, the Makepeace family got rid of the Sandy Neck property and, and the cranberry bogs, they also sold 1,600 acres in the town of Middleborough to conversation to the state. That today is known as the Rocky Gata Wildlife Management Area, and they got something like $800 an acre for that. I'm very well acquainted with the property because I opened seven lives before it was sold. Now, across Pine Street from that reserve, you have the Rod and Gun Club, that originally came from Wayham. They were situated in a Tylenol village in Wayham, but they, the members of the Gun Club decided that they wanted their own property. So the Makepeace Company sold a large tract of land on the other side, and that's where they have their club house today.
So I think we get the point that you're making.
Okay.
I know you probably have a half a dozen other examples.
I can go on for a half an hour.
Well, no, no. I think everybody would be cross with you if you went on for a half an hour, or cross with me for letting you. But thank you for your contributions. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you very much.
And are you, you're retired now, are you?
Yes.
Happy retirement.
I like to live in Carver. I like to stay in this home here. I love it.
Thank you. Who else? Anybody from that side of the room? Anybody from this side of the room? Anybody straight ahead? Nobody? Okay. Okay. Counsel, you good?
Yeah, the reason these people are referring... Excuse me, Chairman, the reason that these folks are declining to comment at this time is they are really trying to keep this on the jurisdictional level, as opposed to...
And they're tired, they don't want, they want to go home.
And they're tired, as I am. Thank you.
Okay. So, I think there has been a promise of sorts made, that counsel on each side of the equation, and appropriate people from Makepeace, should have some conversations that may or may not yield some productive developments, but let's see where that goes. I'm not inclined to have this board make any decisions tonight about jurisdiction or procedure. I think those issues have been well discussed already, and we need not go down that road again now, at this time. But if those discussions that I just referenced do not bear fruit, then this board will make a decision, at least on the procedural or jurisdictional issue, which is where we start with all of these cases. Mr. Barrington's nodding his head, so that's, that's good to see. So, our next meeting is October 26th, which gives you folks on both sides of this issue a good, solid month to have some conversations, that hopefully will yield some positive developments, and less acrimony, and less frustration on the part of Save the Pine Barrens. That frustration, at least for me, comes through loud and clear. So, let's see what we can do, folks. And if we can do, great, if we can't, we will proceed. Anybody?
Do we have any other business?
Yeah, we'll vote to continue this till October 26th.
So moved.
All in favor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Yes. Thank you for your participation, both of you.
Thank you.
We need a motion to adjourn.
How did you do that?
We are still in session?
We're... Excuse me, excuse me, we're still in session? We have to be able to adjourn.
Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Thank you. I'm sorry I yelled.
Mr. Poyer has inquired of the chair whether there is any other business.
God, no.
I don't think there is any other business. I know our intrepid clerk would like to be typing more. Poor woman probably has writer's cramp at this point. But do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I hear a second? Good evening, Carver, thank you for your attention, we are adjourned.
Thank you.